Sworn in, he did respond, correct, Rachel?
Yeah, he did say he was gonna be attending, so I'm gonna try to send him an email and see if she was going on, so.
Well, we'll give a couple of minutes to see if that was the first order of business to swear him in, but. Well, let's put that on hold there to swearing in.
He's just signing in now.
Oh, he is? Oh, he is? Okay.
Yeah, she's coming in.
Okay, do we want to do the swearing in?
Peter, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Peter, if you can hear us, we want to proceed with your swearing in.
Yes, I can hear you. I can hear you.
Okay, alright.
Great, so yeah, we will, I will read the oath. If you could please raise your right hand. And do you solemnly swear solemnly affirm and sincerely affirm as the case may be that you will faithfully discharge according to law your duties as a member of the Fire Protection Sprinkler System Board to the best of your abilities to help you God or upon penalty of perjury?
I do.
Thank you. You're now sworn in as a member of the board, and I wish you luck in your role. Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
I'm hopping off. John or anybody just message me if you need me back on for any reason. Okay?
Thank you, Paul. Thank you, Paul.
Thanks, Paul.
Peter, welcome aboard to the Fire Protection Board.
Thank you.
Welcome.
How do you pronounce your last name? Is it Wills or Willsey or?
Willsey, Addy split it in half. I used to drive the teachers crazy whenever they would answer, Willsey, I always raised my head, what do you want?
Okay, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Begin with the, on the agenda, comments and concerns? People present today? Hearing none? Old business? Uh, like the, just that was a limit is stricken, but I'd like to keep that backflow issue on the, on the old business, unfinished business? Could take care of that, Rachel, make sure that's inserted in there?
Yep, I just took it off since that wasn't, um, hard today's meeting, but yeah, I'll make sure that stays on.
I know this is, I know it's, well, years ago, I know, you know, as organization I was involved with, special, when you had a special meeting, it was for that specific purpose. It wasn't for a general meeting, uh, because I noticed there was no minutes or anything provided, and so we're moving along. Alright, so, uh, got that taken care of. New business? The, uh, application review. Timothy O'Sullivan. Uh, just to bring the board up to speed. Working in normal, uh, scope of things. The way the state has it set up, the, uh, application review working group met on the 25th of September to review, uh, Mr. O'Sullivan's F4 application. And the, uh, uh, persons in attendance, myself and John Mezner, uh, both voted uh, to deny the application due to lack of apprenticeship completion and the submission of the Massachusetts license. Not equivalent to Connecticut's, uh, limited license. Uh, therefore, it's brought before the board in consistency of following the procedure set forth. And the board gets to vote on it now. So I'm sure every board members have received, had a chance, hopefully, hopefully you had a chance to review the application and take a look at it. And put it out there for discussion now.
Alright, well, thank you for having me. Uh, I did prepare a little brief statement. Um, would you like me to read that or do you have a, a different protocol that you go through first?
No, there's no, there's no, uh, set protocol. We, uh, uh, glad to hear your statement, what you, you know, prepared.
Yeah, thank you. So, uh, my name's Timo Sullivan, family business here in Torrington. Um, thank you for your help with the licensing, uh, requirements. Fire Equipment Headquarters, uh, was started and has been a family-owned and operating business since 1952. One of our fire suppression technicians is going out on extended, um, medical leave. I've approached and attended the Fire Sprinkler Board Meeting to navigate this hardship. Um, I feel, uh, open and, and honestly. We pride ourselves in being a small business that provide top-tier service and safety services. Um, there are very few family fire protection businesses left in the state of Connecticut as private equity groups have purchased, uh, most of the competition. Um, I feel that's in the state and consumer's best interest to have a viable business like Fire Equipment Headquarters with multiple licensed technicians due to the set aside bidding requirements that require, um, small businesses to, uh, to bid on the fire protection side of things for the state. I've personally been licensed in the state of Massachusetts for 10 plus years, meeting all the necessary testing requirements, state inspection requirements. Um, additionally, I have extensive educational background for fire suppression systems, including National Association of Fire Equipment Distributors, countless other manufacturing organizations. Um, I don't know if you'd like me to touch base on each, um, class in organization that I've passed and go over each certificate, or have you seen those already?
I, I've seen them, uh, Mr. O'Sullivan, but, uh, you know, I'm assuming the board had a chance, you know, to review them. But just, just to give you uh, basis of the denial is, the F4 is a limited license in the state of Connecticut, but even though it's limited, it's, it's has a pretty broad range of, uh, special hazard type systems.
Yes.
Water, water spray, foam, CO2, dry chemical, uh, Halon.
Yep.
There's, you know, several types of systems that aren't shown in your uh, resume, so to speak.
Okay, okay.
And, and I, I can, you know, sympathize, appreciate your, you know, the fact that you're a small contractor and everything, but the fact that the state has given you, or you're gonna, well, if you take the test and pass, you're allowed to do all that work. It's not just refilling fire extinguishers and doing hood systems.
Right, I understand that.
And, and basically, that's, that's under the procedure, that was the reason for the denial. Now.
Okay. Yeah, I have more background in that also. You know, we're a, we're a licensed DOT hydrostatic testing facility, so, um, carbon dioxide, uh, bottles, hydrostatic testing. You know, I've been doing that for, you know, when my dad was driving his Plymouth Velari, so I've been doing that for a long time, you know, um, uh, your FM 200 systems, um, the Halotron Clean Agents, uh, Halon Clean Agents, um, Amrex Fire Suppression Systems. I've, uh, um, taken, uh, the classes and I've also, you know, having, uh, F3, uh, at the company. Uh, uh, you know, that, that, that stuff is nothing new.
Kevin?
Yes, I have a question for Mr. O'Sullivan. Uh, Mr. O'Sullivan, why can't you complete an apprenticeship?
Well, my, uh, technician is gonna be out. He's gonna be out for six months, and I've got, I've got one F3 uh, tech.
So why can't you just register under that F3?
Register under that F3 and
As an apprentice?
Saying just work under his license? Well, I, I have to be with him. What do I do while he's out the six months? Like, I don't, I don't have anybody servicing these systems.
Oh, the F3 is out?
Yeah, the F3 is out.
Yep. So your contractor's license is out of the business for six months?
Correct, yep.
Do you have any other F4s in, in the employ?
No, no, I've got one fires technician. Fire suppression technician, uh, and he's my F3. Well, so when I first approached the board, um, they gave me a list of things that they thought would be uh, beneficial, including, you know, my OSHA 30, I've done that. I have, uh, completed, uh, National Association of Fire Equipment Distributors Fire Suppression System Training Course, Amrex Industrial, these are all things that have been completed both since the meeting and also that I've had previous being licensed in Massachusetts. Uh, Amrex Industrial System Design Installation Maintenance, uh, Amrex Dry Chemical Vehicle Systems, Amrex Kiss and Kitchen Design and Install, Amrex, um, Recharge Manuels, National Association Fire Equipment Distributors Pre-Engineered Kitchen System Seminar, Hyzer Logistics Training Application Installation Maintenance. Um, I could keep, I can keep going. I don't know how much behind.
How about anything to do with CO2, water spray? Foam systems?
I have, uh, let me see what I've got here.
Because basically, everything you have is, is, you know, I, I, I don't like to use the term loosely, but hood systems, you know?
Correct, yeah, the majority, the majority of the work that our company does is hood systems.
Right, but, and, and
And I understand the license.
It's, it's, it's a broader spec, you know, scope of work. If, if you take the test and pass, you're allowed to do all that work. It's, 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 you know, it's not just, you know, the going to the Chinese restaurant picking, you know, one from column A, you know, it's, it's, you've got the whole the whole range of what's specified in there, what, some of the, you know, categories that I mentioned.
Yes, yeah.
And, you know, it's not just, you know, I mean, we, we can't say, okay, yeah, you could, you're gonna get the F4, but only to do hood systems and recharge fire extinguishers, so to speak.
I understand that. I understand that, yeah. Um, yeah, the, the scope of our work is mainly that scope, and I understand the board's, uh, position that when you get an F4 licensed, you can do foam systems, you can do, uh, CO2, you can do, uh, clean agent. I understand that.
Yeah.
Um, but the basic principles are, are pretty much the same as far as, um, you know, the servicing, taking things offline, taking the, uh, taking the alarm system off, removing the control head, hydrostatic, static testing the bottles. Um, lot of the same animal, different chemical. And being licensed CO2 hydrotest facility as well, like we uh, high pressure, uh, CO2, I've got a $8,000, 8,000 pound CO2 tank in the back. I mean, a, a high pressure CO2 is not, um, anything out of, uh, out of my norm.
So I just wanna say, my concern, it follows along with Chairman Oscar, is, is there's more things covered under license, strictly just a kitchen hood system license, looking at all of your qualifications, uh, it's like a no-brainer. You've done your research, taken the classes. It's unfortunate the circumstances you're going through right now, but as Kevin mentioned, you know, it wouldn't be a bad thing for you to get registered as an apprentice. Do the apprenticeship and qualify to take the test. And it's kind of one of those things where you trip and then you figure it out. You might have to, and I'm not speaking to tell you how to run your business or anything, but you should run an ad and try to hire somebody short-term, or maybe you can grow your business by picking up a licensed person. It doesn't help you get your license, but that's all I can recommend to try to move forward. So you don't run into this.
Hmm. Yeah, I'm, yeah, alright.
Mr. Chair, can I jump in for one second? Just, I want to clarify something just for the record.
Alright, go ahead, John.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Sullivan cannot be registered as an apprentice, because the way that I understand in my conversations with him, you are the business owner, correct, sir?
That's correct, yep.
Okay, so a business owner in the state of Connecticut cannot be registered as an apprentice. Um, but Mr. O'Sullivan did appear before the board looking for, uh, recommendations on how to proceed on this at the last board meeting. And correct me if I'm wrong, sir, but you brought your two sons with you, correct?
Yep.
Yeah, so are your sons part of the business ownership?
As part as the business ownership, uh, no, not at this point. Um, they are, uh, they're in college right now. So they work, uh, in the summers, to be, to be honest with you. And I've got one senior and two sophomores.
You're presented at the board as, uh, you know, employees, you know, potentially coming on board in the future, but that, I just want to clarify that for the record. I won't take away from the board's time and asking your questions, but you cannot be registered as an apprentice, but it doesn't mean that you don't have a pathway in registering your sons to continue to grow the business when you're at three returns.
Okay, yeah, and I understand that, and I think that there should be a path for a business owner to, to, to be able to do this. So you can run a, a successful small business, but you can't, but there's no path to get an F4 as a business owner?
There is, you just have to take a step back. The way that our laws are written, you do not have to have a license to own a business in the state of Connecticut. So you could own a business and you could run the business, and you just have to hire the properly licensed people to engage in the work and be the contractor of record, et cetera. If you decided that you wanted to do the work. Then you need to step down, and the reason why you can't be a business owner and an apprentice, how could you be running the business and be in the field, getting the supervised attention that you need by that licensed contractor or journey person to engage in that work? It, it's, it's not really feasible. That's why they don't allow such, and that's not our laws, that's apprenticeship laws. You could raise that question with the Director of Apprenticeship for clarity on such, but from our perspective, it's, it's tough to run a business and do what you're doing right now and also be that apprentice gaining that experience.
Yeah, I would think that as a business owner, if you wanted to be a one-man show and go out and do fire suppression, you, you should be able to.
And you can, you just have to take a step back to pursue such.
If you worked for somebody, you know, in, in the past, if
But where, but where, but where am I gonna go? I can't go to Roy Bell. Roy Bell was bought. I can't go to and I don't, and, you know, I don't want to name names and not be correct on something. You know, I can come up with one, two, three, four, five, six, seven companies that have been bought by a private equity group. I can't go work for them.
No, because you're not licensed. I mean, you can work and you don't.
But if you're saying, go, go, like, I, I, I'm gonna quit my job and go work for Encore? To go get my license?
Well, the only thing I can tell you, in the past, having been on the board for a while, we did have an issue years ago, not an issue, an instance where contractor did step down, turned the business over to his brother, I believe. I'm trying to remember now, it's been a while, but, uh, you know, to, to go that avenue, because what John just said, as an owner, you can't, you can't, you know, serve as, serve an apprenticeship.
Yeah, yeah. And in regard to the CO2 systems, I mean, there's very few CO2 systems left out there. There's, the, you know, there's so many other types of agents that most insurance companies don't even want a CO2 system there because they're afraid it's gonna go off in a room, and, and if there's no time delay, somebody's gonna get hurt, so.
Well, it's same thing, I mean, it's like, you know, I mean, Halon, Halon, you know, the same thing, it's, it's bad for the atmosphere. I mean, they, you know, a lot, a lot of different systems, but those are the systems that are covered under this license. There's still
Yeah.
systems that are out there that need maintenance, and, and you being in that type of business may be called upon to go service that, and you don't have the you, you're not producing the credentials showing that you're trained in that, uh,
Okay.
field.
So if I go back, so I mean, yeah, the problem is, I don't have time on my hands. That's, that's my, that's my, my problem. So if I were to go back to Amrex and say, hey, uh, I know you guys don't do much with CO2 systems anymore, uh, I mean, yeah, it, it just doesn't seem.
Well, the only other avenue, Mr. O'Sullivan, is, is hi, you know, put a one ad or whatever, hire somebody with an F4 for the interim or whatever.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I, you know, it's, 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 it's like I said, you know, it, it's, it's we can't say, okay, yeah, we'll allow you to take the test, but you gotta swear, you know, on a stack of bibles that you're only gonna do kitchen hood system refill, you know, it, we can't work, it doesn't work that way, so.
Well, let me pass, let me pass the test then.
That's not the, it's not the issue. You, you're trying, you're, you're applying under equivalency that the, uh, I'm trying to, I don't have the pay, but Massachusetts, uh, license.
Hmm.
Um, let me see, uh, look at my was a CC 46 and CC 48. One was for portable fi, portable fire extinguishers, and the other one was pre-engineered fixed systems. That's what your license covers in the state of Massachusetts. It doesn't go to broad spectrum into the state of Connecticut as, you know, under the F4 limited license category.
Hmm.
That's, that, again, that's, that was the reason for the denial at the, at the, uh, working group, uh, meeting had. That's why, well, go ahead.
Are there any reciprocal licensings that the state allows then? So if I go to Rhode Island and, um, and, and get their license? Like, what's a reciprocal license that the state allows?
Connecticut has no reciprocal agreement with any other jurisdiction.
You're going with equivalency, you know, if I use, I'm sorry, if I, if I did for some reason use the word reciprocal, but equivalency is the word, uh, you know?
Yeah.
It's a lot I use, but, uh.
You know, a big union shop can, can afford to take a guy out for, for six months. Or, you know, how do you hire a guy for six months and say, hey, I need you for six months before my guy comes back?
Can you put the, can you put the business in, can you put the business in somebody else's name for six months and hire yourself as an apprentice?
Um.
Problem, problem is, problem is, he has nobody to work under. He doesn't have that.
Oh, I Yeah.
Gotcha.
Like I say, I, 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 you know, the, the procedure, just, I, I don't know if, um,
Well, can I ask, can I, I didn't mean to interrupt you, go ahead.
I, I don't know if Karen, I know Karen's been pretty diligent in, in corresponding with you, getting back to you, and, you know, the major is uh, policy or whatever. You, your, your application goes before the, uh, working group, which it did. Step, when it was denied, step two is appeal process is to come before the entire board. You know, the board, the board will have a vote on it today.
Uh.
Unless they decide to table it or whatever, uh, this, if that does not pass, step three is, is, I guess, through the court system.
Hmm.
Am I correct in what I'm saying, John?
That's correct. So, Mr. O'Sullivan, if you decided, depending on which direction the board went in today after a motion, if you wanted to pursue this, you could go the pathway of utilizing the court system, uh, to contest the decision made by the board.
Okay. Alright, I mean, it's the boards. The board honestly believes that, like, the 10,000, 20,000 restaurants that are out there are all being maintained by licensed people like I'm trying to do? That's
That says also, how many people drove up the highway at, at 65 miles an hour today? I mean, there was probably some people doing, you know, it's, it's, you know, but
If they're not, their insurance companies are never gonna pay in a claim.
Yeah, I mean.
Look what happened in Rhode Island, Block Island.
I don't, yeah, I, I don't know whatever the outcome was with that, to be honest with you. Um, so I'm trying to get through the next six months. What, what? Basically, I, I'm on my own. Is that what you're telling me?
I as far as you uh, being approved for the license, I mean, it's up to the board to, I mean, they haven't voted, so you, you, I mean, you may have convinced them. You didn't, I mean, myself, I wasn't convinced. It's, uh, you know, I, again, I see no additional information to say, yeah, I'd reverse my decision.
Okay.
Again, just for the record, I don't have a vote today. I only get to express my opinion, you know, and, and report the facts of what, what happened there.
Yeah.
But, go ahead, Kevin.
Mr. O'Sullivan, am I, I, I thought you said you had an F3 on the payroll, do you not?
I do.
Oh, you do?
He's the one, he's the one that's gonna be out.
Oh, I thought you had an F4 and an F3, I'm sorry.
No, 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 I've got, I've got one, I've got one F3.
Alright, so.
He's gonna be out.
Gotcha.
Yep, so, um, you know, so here's some, here are some invoices from jobs that I've done out of state, you know, uh, semi-annual inspection of a gas canopy at Vassar College. Um, Dunkin' Donuts, Patterson, New York. Uh, Berkshire School, I installed a new fire suppression system. Uh, Olivet Academy hydrotested their system and updated it. Uh, Aminia, New York, another one. Berkshire School had their captive air fire suppression system discharged. I went out there and recharged that. Uh, Biggie Sweet Madeline's, the donut place, um, upgrade inspection. You know, I've got like this. So.
Sorry. Unfortunately, you're, you're, it seems like you're asking us I mean, I think he's got, I don't think this guy's gonna go outside of his lane personally. But I just, he really just needs a motion, you know?
Come check out my shop. Come, come meet the family. Come meet my mother who's here every day. Come, come, we talk to our employees, like, the state should want a company like us.
We do, but as a business owner, you should also want to make sure other contractors are following the laws and have the proper license in and weren't just allowed to take a test because of some unfortunate circumstances out there and
No, I agree with you. No, I agree with you. I, I agree with you, but I've done, I've done more than that. I, I've, I've tested. I've held the license, I've proven, um, my knowledge. Um, you know, the. I, I've done it the right way. I've, I've come before the board. I'm not out there saying, hey, let me go do this. Um, nobody will ever catch me. That, that's not the way I went about it.
No, you did it, you did it by the book, but unfortunately, we're, we're playing by that same book, you know, it's, you know, our, our hands are tied because we have to. See that you meet the requirements to sit for the test. And as we're, as, well. As was presented to the, to the working group, it wasn't. So it's up, up to the board now. So, uh, you know, if the board wants to make a motion. To approve or deny, that's, that's up to the, you know.
Okay. Well, wouldn't the test tell whether or not I'm adequate to, to hold the license? I can't pass the test if I don't have the knowledge.
But you don't have the experience to take the test.
Exactly.
Well, I, I think I've got more than enough of an experience. Now, can you make the argument, do I not have a lot of experience in CO2? You could make that argument. Can I make the argument that there's not a lot of CO2 left out there? I think that's a good argument also.
How about foam?
Foam? We don't do a lot of foam. I mean, most, we don't do any foam. Not going to lie to you. Like who, like, does every F three and F four work on foam systems? Like, um. You know, like, when you go to the air, how many, how many customers in Connecticut have foam? You, you know, Bradley's a customer of ours. Bradley's, uh, uh, we, we do all the fire extinguishers at Bradley, you know, and. For the fact of the matter is, with the PFAS and stuff, they're phasing out the foam.
It's still out there though.
Still out there. As a company owner, I can make a decision not to, not to want to have that liability for a, uh. For a system that's being phased out. Or that's just a lot of liability filling a hanger with foam. But I could still pass, but I could still pass the test.
Is there any other way you can manage this next six months? Without.
I can go out on the road. I can go out on the road unlicensed.
No, we're not, but a lot of those jo, a lot of those jobs you read off on your. You were just a few minutes back, we're out of, out of state of Connecticut, not in.
And you'd be, you'd be adding the liability to your customers too. Don't do that.
No, well, I could list off a whole list of ones in Connecticut we do. These are the ones that I do personally out of state because I'm not licensed.
Hmm.
No, the ones that I, no, no, I'm saying the ones that I read off to you are ones that I do in New York, Massachusetts.
Right, I'm saying, so.
But we have a whole litany of ones that we do in Connecticut as well through my licensed F three. I don't want you to think that's the only customers that we have.
I'm just wondering if by chance they could be postponed for the six months without breaching the standard of care.
No, the. NFPA requires them every six months.
Right. So if he did them before he left and did them when he got back, would they be within tolerance? Because there's a two-month uh, flexibility there within the standard.
Yeah, no.
I, I sit on the code writing authority for NFPA too, so I know those subtle nuances.
Okay, yeah, I mean.
So if he, if he has eight months to do the inspections and he's out for six, he's got two months to do them when he gets back.
Yeah, well, yeah, the code is every six months and that's what him being, um. That's, that's what everything go according to plan.
Right. But that is, that could be a plan, right?
Um, well. No, I don't, I don't, I don't believe so because, I mean, the phone will still ring with people needing. Stuff done. I was like, I can't.
Yeah, so you need somebody to service. You need somebody to call for service. You need to refer them to some, you know, friendly contractor that you're friendly with.
They've all been bought. It's true, right? You guys know who.
That is, yeah, you'd have to use one of the national brands, right?
Yeah, Jerry Roybell, he's gone.
I know.
You know, I, I don't want to name, I don't want to name names of people because I don't know what's. Here is public and what's not, but I can tell you. There's no, name another small family business.
I can, Rob Filner. And when his dad died, he continued on without a license and he was caught and now he's out of business.
Yeah.
I'd hate to see you go down that path.
Yeah, I don't want to go that path either. And that's why I'm here and that's why I've been open and honest about it.
Well, it sounds like to get a registered apprentice going as soon as possible when your license is back and so that. Oh, you don't have this problem.
How many apprentices am I allowed to have under, uh, am I allowed to have?
One apprentice.
One apprentice, yeah.
One to one.
Uh huh.
I mean, then if you, if you wanted an additional one, you'd have to hire additional journey, 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 uh, journeyman.
Would the board be willing to, to work with me on that?
What's that?
Have two apprentices on at the same time.
That's the Labor Department. You'd have to petition the Labor Department for that.
Yeah, because on one hand, you, you're saying, you know, how can a business owner be an apprentice if he's running this business? But on the other hand, as a business owner, how do I? You know, as I'm trying to grow this. Side of the field. You know, I'd have to do my apprentice for three years and I wouldn't be able to take on another guy for an apprentice for three years.
Or you could apply for racial relief through, but like Kevin just said, it's Department of Labor handles that.
Yeah.
It might grant you relief. Petition them.
Well, it doesn't, yeah, it doesn't help me.
You can't, can't hurt to ask.
Well, I've asked all along. I've asked, I've, I've been through the process here and then. You know, it's just, I, I, I feel like I'm, I'm. Just me and. Met with roadblocks when I'm, when I've.
All right.
John, you got your hand up?
Yeah, I just want to clarify, Kevin, racial relief is now with the Department of Civil Protection. So.
Thanks. Gotcha.
And it's, and it's, and it's only relief, just for clarity, it doesn't excuse the one-to-one job site ratio. It's only for relief on, um, when there's a number of licensees and the hiring ratio doesn't allow. It allows for additional apprentices to be manned one-to-one, up to eight right now is what's being approved. As the board needs to develop a policy before February first of twenty twenty-six. Just want to clarify.
I thought that didn't take effect until.
The board's policy doesn't take effect till February first, twenty twenty-six. As of October first of this year. We, the department's reviewing applications up to eight, yeah.
That's, I didn't know.
I thought it was next, February next year, I'm.
Me too, yeah. So, I got two things going against me. One, being a business owner and two, having one tech. Being out. So what I'm asking you guys to do is to work with me. That's, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah. So, I mean, you, you've, you've made your case before the board. I mean, you, you, you know, you. It was looked at by the uh. Review working group. Now it's up to the board, so, uh, I mean.
All right, I'm gonna have. Yeah, I have close to six hundred customers being out of, out of compliance. And, and how do you hold on to those customers? You don't.
Okay, so I think we need to make a motion, probably, to vote on this.
And you, I'll entertain a motion somehow, either approve or deny or whatever, but uh, it's got to, you, you, you've. You've heard my, you know, you heard Mr. O'Sullivan, you heard my reasons for why it was denied, uh. Again, it's up, it's, you know, now it goes before the full board, so.
Okay.
Oh, is there a motion out there?
I'll make the motion.
For?
A vote.
Yeah, I know for. Hmm? For, prove or deny, prove or deny, Wayne, that's.
Denied.
Okay. So there's a motion on the floor to deny the application. Is there a second?
I second it.
All right, Sean Martin seconded. Any, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, so it's.
Has everybody voted? Does everybody vote?
Everybody but me. All right, so it's.
I'm abstaining from voting today.
Say again?
I'm abstaining from voting today.
For your reason, please.
I don't. Remember receiving a information packet for a last of back of terms. Uh, indicating his, uh, current licensing requirements and experience. All I've heard is, uh, verbal testimony.
There was in the, there was an attachment in the uh. Email Rochelle sent out.
I've been looking for that and I'm able to find it. So I'm going to abstain at this point.
All right, you abstained, so. All right, so it's, uh, let's see. One, two, three, four. All right, four no's and one is staying, right? Did I miss anybody? Let me just write this down.
Now, where do I find the path that other people have taken? Uh, that have gotten. An approval through the board.
Say again?
Where do I find, where, where do I find where other people have gotten approved through the board, um. Without estate licenses?
Well, I, I would. Karen, Karen Lehman's, uh, you've been, been your go-to person. She would have more information because there's never, I don't think it's, I can't recall any that's gone to step three where it's gone to, but uh. Like I, I earlier stated that it's, uh, the next step would be to the court system. You know. You know, you're going to appeal to the, you know, take it to court. And uh. Go that route. I, I, that's, that's, I, I'm not trying, you know, that's all I could tell you, Mr. O'Sullivan, it's, uh.
Okay.
You know, I, I don't, I don't have that information, uh.
All right.
John, I don't know if you've come across this before, uh.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if you, if you don't mind, if the board, uh, wouldn't, would be, would look at his application. For the equivalency of what he has in his out-of-state credential. If the board wanted to make a recommendation to accept the certifications that he has as meeting equivalency for the related instruction. And potentially looking at his on-the-job training, the board can, for minute purposes, make a recommendation that. Mr. O'Sullivan entered into an apprenticeship for a set amount of time to get that. Experience on the job training that he needs to substantiate the differential between his out-of-state license and the Connecticut F four. So that he has a pathway to pursue without doing a full apprenticeship, if the board wanted to consider that.
How do, how do you not do a full apprenticeship?
The, well, the board can weigh at this moment his out-of-state equivalency. So he has experience with his Massachusetts license, which meets roughly three quarters of what the F four has.
Yeah, but he's not, he's not, well, I, I don't know if I'd. Stretch it to three quarters, but I mean, uh, because I think there's, there's a, there's a lot of shortcomings there or lacking, uh. But I mean, I, I, I don't think it's up to the board to issue a limited, limited license.
Oh, no, not, not to issue a limited license, but just acknowledging the fact that if he was entered into an apprenticeship when his F three comes back. It was able to, again, step aside, follow through the procedures to be approved as an apprentice. And to go out into the field, it gives Mr. O'Sullivan a pathway to moving towards achieving that F four.
So in other words, John, we could give him credit for the experience he has in certain aspects of the F four.
Correct. And, and again, it would be on Mr. O'Sullivan to follow through, to get the apprenticeship. To do the term and then come back before the board, without having the gold seal letter, to have a partial apprenticeship. In hand with the testimony from his F three acknowledging the work that he did. That exceeds the scope of the work that he's gained in Massachusetts. Uh, to come before the board and test as such, and the board could then take that into consideration. It just, it's a pathway, Mr. Chair.
We've, we've always accepted notarized letters from an employer stating dates and duties of employment. You know, that's, that's been one, one of the pathways, as you, as you call it, but uh, like I say. I, I. I don't see.
At least you're giving me a path, John. At least you're telling me, hey, here's something you can do. Hey, I understand that you've got this, this, and this. Um, you know, you've got time served. Uh, what you need to do is this.
And, and essentially you could do that, but again, to, to comply with law, you wouldn't need to do such in that Russian apprenticeship program. And again, if, uh, you know, just so you get that hands-on experience, because you don't want to get that experience without being richer, because then you're violating. So. If you have that pathway to follow through to, like Kevin was making a recommendation before. To roll into an apprenticeship, and again, you would have a little business restructuring to do. Um, that it is just a pathway so you could hopefully work towards getting this credential.
Okay.
The issue I see though is, you know, he stated that. The areas he needs more experience in, they don't do that work. They don't go out and work on foam systems. They don't. Do that work. So he's saying that they wouldn't even touch that if we had allowed them, but now we want to. Say, okay. Registered, but.
He could in the future though.
He's not gonna get.
Can I clarify a little bit? Um, so my F three does do that work. He does work on the FM two hundreds. He does work on the CO2. He does work on the kitchen canopy systems. Or excuse me, the gas station canopy systems. So.
There's nothing restricting him from doing that work in the future. You just haven't done it in the past.
Me personally.
Right.
So is that a, um. Common sense approach then? Can we work together on that? What John mentioned?
Well. John's not, John's not allowed, John's not saying you could take the test. John's just telling you, you know.
But at least John's given me a path. At least John's saying, hey, Tim, here's, here's a path rather than, hey, you're on your own.
Take my recommendation, become an apprentice, but you're going to have to restructure your company to do that.
Okay, well. Will you allow me to do that with? Um, things that I've done already? Will you take into consideration, um. My mass license, my mass work that I've done in license, the, um. Um, training that I've had from, I mean, the, the manufacturers say I'm okay to, to sell their products. Uh, and install it, so.
Of course they do, but we would recognize your experience. We would recognize your experience.
Yeah, Amrex doesn't sign everybody up. You can't just go to, to Amrex and say, hey, I want to install, uh, your systems.
Understood. Understood.
So can we at least? Um, can, can you at least take what John had to say into, into consideration?
Down the road, you could, you can, you could make application again, but it's, 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 you would have to have documentation. From, for. The topics that I, I, I brought up.
Well, and that's where the apprenticeship, then that's where the additional apprenticeship would come in. Yeah, so you take into consideration what I've done and then I add to it based on. Based on the hangups. That the.
Mr. O'Sullivan, if it was just to do hood systems and refill extinguishers. And that, that was the license category, you'd be approved, but it's, it's, it's a broader scope than that. And we can't, we can't say, we can't. Uh, you know, allow you to sit for the test to do all that stuff, even though you say, I'm not going to do it because.
I understand that.
You're, you know.
I understand that. First of all, Massachusetts has a license that allows you to do kitchen systems. Connecticut does not. You gotta, you gotta do this whole broad spectrum for systems that are antiquated. Now, I'm willing to go learn on these antiquated systems to pacify. The licensing requirements.
I would recommend, uh. I would recommend uh. Like John said and Kevin saying, restructure your business. See if you can't get yourself registered as an apprentice. Once you are registered, if it happens, then you come back to the board, reapply. With all the proper credentials like Chairman Wasco would said. And we reviewed this as a whole new thing, and if you have the. Proper training and hours. Then you take the test.
So you were requiring me to do a three-year, or are you? Going to accept. My past experiences?
Well, you have past experience. You're just getting registered as an apprentice here. And that would be up to the Department of Apprenticeship.
And if you think.
Department of Labor can give you some, can, can credit you for some time, I, I believe, isn't that?
Yeah, I mean, we're just kicking the can down the road. I want.
We're not kicking the can down the road. We can't, we can't say, yeah, go ahead, you could take the test.
If I didn't have the knowledge, I wouldn't pass the test. And the test isn't, and people who. Take the tests, it's, you can bring your pamphlets anyway, right?
It's open book. Yes, I mean, it's, you know, I mean.
But they want to go F2 and. They're not qualified.
Become an apprentice, show us your equivalency, and it might not take you three years.
Yeah, might not. So the whole time, so if it does take me three years, that's the whole time that I can have another apprentice. Being trained. It's like I'm being, I'm being handcuffed, like.
Well, grow the business and hire another journeyman.
Alright.
That's. It's unfortunate what you're going through, and we feel for you, but there's nothing we can do about that part.
We can't make a limited, limited license.
That you could give me a path, the path that, that.
We have.
We've given you two alternatives. It's, it's, you know, but we, we can't.
You don't, you don't like it, but we have.
No, I don't like it. I don't like it, especially when I know what's going out and out there in the industry, when the guy tries to do it right. And I can do it in Massachusetts, but I can't do it in Connecticut. That there's something wrong with that.
And New York doesn't have a license, so that, that, I mean, you know, there's states that there's no licensing laws.
We don't, we don't make that rule. You can, you can change the rules if you want through legislation. You can make a limited, limited license for hood systems only, petition the legislature.
Yep. John, you got anything you can uh, you want to add?
I mean, I'm happy to answer any questions on behalf of the department, but this is, this is the board meeting, so I would have to. You know, have you, have you direct any questions to the chair? Just because there is.
Based on what you said about, you know, I call it time served. What, what, what can I do to? To go down that path?
Again, as, as been indicated, I would, I would recommend going on to the Department of Labor's website, printing off the work schedule for the, for the F4 license. You can look at what you could essentially cross off based upon direct equivalency with what you're allowed to do with your Massachusetts license. And identify that scope of work where the deficiencies are. It would be up to your F3 contractor record when he returns the work, if you were able to, again, restructure and become that registered apprentice. To then document that required timing and be mindful that that work schedules only. Utilizes a guidance. It's not saying that you have to get the full thousand hours or 500 hours in, in a specific category, but you need to be close. But again, to Mr. Chair's uh, direction there, identify those discrepancies. If it takes you six months. Then it takes you six months and you come back before the board. If it takes you two years to get those uh, components complete. Then it takes you two years. But I think if you're, as long as you're in an apprenticeship and you're legally engaging under supervision. And you have that opportunity to come back before the board. Um, you know, I, I think that the, what's in question here is your on-the-job training. It's not your related instruction. So.
Does the rest of the board agree with that?
I'd have to look at the F4 requirements to give you that answer. Specifically.
Each application is handled as they come in. I mean, if you, if you, you know, a year from now or whatever, you, you made application, you had further documentation. That would be uh, you know, looked at and considered. And uh, like I say, it's, it's, I'm not, not saying, you know, that. Six months from now, you, you're going to have all that knowledge or whatever. I, I, I can't say that. I mean, I, you know. But like I say, if you, you reapply. Your application will be looked at again. It'd be, you know, it's the same scrutiny that's done this time. You know, I, I mean, I try to look at all the applications and see where. You know, that they meet the requirements of the state of Connecticut. It's uh. If you come, if you are a registered apprentice with the Department of Labor. By completion, they give issue, we call them gold seal letters or whatever, but you get a completion letter. There you go. That's your, that's your, you know, Willy Wonka golden ticket there. Uh, you know, it's uh. I mean, it's, it's, the rules are the rules. I mean, we, we, we can't, we can't amend the rules. I, we can't say, yeah. You, you got two-thirds of the qualifications or you got half the qualifications, so we'll give you a half a license. Doesn't work that way. It's, it's all or none. So I mean, like I say, it's uh, we could, we could debate this for, till the cows come home and it's, it's not going to change the issue with Mr. O'Sullivan. It's, 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 you know. The ruling, you know.
Yeah, so I'm on my own for the next six months and um. See what the licensing, see what the apprenticeship people have to say is what basically I've accomplished today.
Well, like I say, I, I know you've had. Conversations or communications with Karen Lehman. She's, she is very knowledgeable, very helpful. I mean, I don't mean to slough it off onto her, but you know, it's, you know. That's, that's where I would, I would, you know, she would be able to help you to best as far as. Answering some of those questions.
Alright. Any idea how many foam systems there are in the state?
How many foam systems?
Yeah.
I don't know, I couldn't tell you.
I would say it's in the hundreds.
I know I've worked on foam systems in my career, but I mean, uh.
I've installed quite a few.
Yeah, yeah.
Places like Waterbury Oxford Airport have half a dozen of them. You know, little municipal airports have them.
Yeah.
Oil systems have them, oil fields have them, tank storage down in New Haven has a ton of them.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and every guy and, and every person that's working on systems is working on those.
The license allows it.
Yeah, if you have an F2, if you have, F2 covers that work. I, I, you know, I mean, we used to inspect the foam tanks down at, you know, different places.
Right, right. So all these guys at Encore who are doing this work are getting their hours working on those foam systems down in Oxford Airport.
Well, those aren't the only ones. I'm giving you an example of the smaller airports that do have them to give you a sense of how many there are throughout the state of Connecticut. There are more than you believe.
And the same with CO2 systems.
That I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah. Alright, I can tell you in Litchfield County, there's probably zero foam systems.
Say again?
In Litchfield?
Litchfield County, yep.
Where's Waterbury Oxford Airport?
Oxford.
Is that Litchfield or Fairfield?
No. New Haven. Alright. Well, I appreciate your time.
Well, sorry to, you know, the, the outcome, but I mean, it's, it's not, you know, what you expected, but it's, it's, it's in the statute, it's in the rules.
But you should have an honest family business who has. Years of experience, a path, and I'm leaving today feeling. That I, you're not giving me a path. Some, change my ownership. Um, it's just. I, I, I feel like it's this. Um. Just based around big businesses that can have. Hundreds of people on their staff that, that can, that can do this.
Mr. O'Sullivan, Mr. O'Sullivan, why did you never get your license in all these years?
We just, the, we, we just started this division of our company.
Oh, so this is new?
Yeah, well, I've had my, I've had my F3 for a year and a half.
Oh, okay. So it's not a, an old family business. This is something new, a new endeavor of yours.
We've been in business since 1952. Fire extinguishers, hydrostatic testing, uh, gas meter calibrations. No, right here in Torrington. When my dad fires, when my dad did fire systems, leasing, licensing wasn't a requirement. My mom was all. Trained by firefighter for fire suppression systems.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Got you.
All these tags back here. Go back from 1952 all the way to today, family, family owned.
So who was doing them before a year and a half ago?
We subbed them out. To a company that's such, that's. Been since bought. By private, private equity in California.
Got you.
Fortunately, that's the uh. Nature of the beast out there in the business world this, this day and age, uh, you know, the little fish get gobbled up by the big ones and uh.
I agree. You want, look at, you wonder why? I'm seeing firsthand. That's all I got.
Alright, so.
I appreciate you guys' time.
You know, but. You know, I know you're, you're leaving here disappointed, but uh, it's.
Yeah, I'm Irish. I'm Irish. Get my Irish up.
Yeah.
So, but I appreciate you guys, appreciate your time. I'm not going to waste any more of your time. And if you guys uh, think you can come up with another path, um, it would be appreciated.
Right.
Alright.
Take care. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. Alright, moving right along. Ratio relief. You're after, we, part of the reason we have in a special meeting is a, you know. John's had some meetings with some of the other boards or board chairmans or whatever. Um, I think the electrical board has discussed it. Um. As we kind of stated here, I, I thought it didn't, this didn't take effect till next year, but. Yeah. October 1st, a lot of laws going to effect, so uh, we have to come up with a policy. The uh. Recommendation was what, 85% John? Better go to beyond the uh, one-to-one?
As, as guidance, um. So. You know, the electrical board just met last Friday. Where they, their meeting was specifically around, that, that was a special meeting specifically around looking at. Uh, the ratio relief process and what their board's policy is going to be. Now, the electrical board has worked with. The other, uh, well, the electrical board chair, excuse me, having had previous knowledge on that particular board with the board chair. And one of the board members having been part of the apprenticeship council that would do the ratio relief reviews uh, previously. So they have extensive knowledge in this uh, field. Uh, with that being said, um. You know, they did come up with notes from the meeting the other day, and next steps for us would be another board chair meeting. Uh, so again, the four boards that are impacted are electrical, fire protection, plumbing, and heating cooling. Uh, so those four board chairs can meet again. We could have a discussion along with the Attorney General's Office, who represents the boards, DCP Legal. Who would look at it for compliance with uh, adherence to the laws that was passed. And um. Go from there this way here. If all four boards were in agreeance to. One policy, we can move forth with one policy. We just have to have the board's policy in place by again, February 1st of 2026.
What was it? You, you mentioned the other day in that phone conversation about the uh. The uh, proof of uh, journeyman. The uh, how, how, how was that worded, John? Trying to remember to.
Yeah, so one of, one of the conversations uh, that was had with the electrical board was. Uh, previously, at the board chair meeting, there was conversation of requesting a list of all the licensed individuals uh, with job titles, just to kind of give. The board an idea of how many people would be in the field. Um, you know, as such, people could be deceptive as to what the titles are. So. The electrical boarding conversation, again, it's uh. It's in notes at the moment, um, was going to request. Uh, the names of the individuals that are licensed that would be eligible for direct supervision of that apprentice. So. With any luck, a company that has, for example, 30 licensees and is seeking. You know, we've seen a few requests uh, for the exact number, so 30 licensees. And again, the department's not approving that because there's no policy in place at the moment. Um, of those 30 licensees, there's a good likelihood that one's an estimator, one's an office person, so. If, if, when they read the policy and they read the fact that that licensee needs to be available for direct, they, daily direct supervision. Of that apprentice. It should help them identify the individuals that could honestly be in the field for that direct supervision.
Well, I like, I, I, I like that. Uh. Caveat there that they have to provide a list of employees with their job titles, you know, to assure. To assure direct supervision. So I, I mean, I would recommend that. I don't know if the rest of the board uh. Agrees, but.
I agree. I like the way that sounds. Um, I think that was a big thing we spoke about last time we had a meeting. Uh. One other thing I kind of was just thinking of here is. When somebody requests this, will it also be looked at? You know, if such contractor maybe had violations in the past, been caught working unregistered apprentices. Things like that, that way there, we're not rewarding a bad actor. Um, where they've proven themselves that, you know, they don't follow the rules anyways.
Well, great, great question. So the way that it's established right now, even for individuals that are applying under eight individuals. If there was a violation either by the Department of Consumer Protection and/or Department of Labor Wage and Workplace Standards. Uh, those violations would um, come before the board, so the board can assess. What it is and make a determination based on the violations. You know, one thing to take in consideration is, you know, failing, a failure to display a license number. Really should not be a hindrance on somebody applying for ratio relief, especially if they corrected that violation. But you know, to Wayne's point, somebody that was tagged either by DCP, DOL, and or both. For unregistered, unlicensed individuals in the job site, that's in, that's something for the board to take into consideration.
I, I, I'd like to add that into the language and you, you bring that back to, you know, when the boards meet that, that violations, either whether they're with DCP or DOL.
Oh, they will right now. That, that's already in there.
It is in there?
Yeah, so right, right now.
To the board, John? I mean, I don't care. I, but if, if failure to display. Should be reported, but I mean, it doesn't have to be acted upon, if you follow what I'm saying. It's just, I mean, just, you know, that's like for years, I mean. Most, everybody, Tony's not here to back me up, you know, but. Years ago, we used to, you know, the failure to display or whatever. Were cases or, or uh, charges that we felt didn't have to come before the board. They were cut and dry. Somebody, somebody didn't put their license number on a business card. That's not gonna, that's not gonna affect how somebody's operating their business. If somebody's out there working unlicensed. That's, that's another, you know, uh, road to go down. But I mean, I, you know, like I say. I don't care what the offense is. I think all violations should be reported when somebody's looking for ratio relief. Let the board act upon it. Don't, don't, don't give somebody. I, in, in the department, the, the ability to, to strike. Uh, a report, you know, a report of a violation, so to speak.
Now, in the application, the way it's stated right now, they have to attest to having no violations of DCP, and they have to attest to having no. Uh. DOL violations. And, and again, it's only on wage. So if they had an apprenticeship issue that was not included within the law. Uh, but again, apprenticeship is usually handed over to us and DCP. Uh, but again, apprenticeship is usually handed over to us at DCP for enforcement matters. So where that usually becomes a DCP violation anyhow. Uh, Kevin, did you have a question for me?
Yeah, Peter raised his hand first, though.
Oh, sorry, uh, Pete.
Yeah, John, because you said that they need to give you their title. Uh, how about the job description that goes along with that title? Because they, I could stow a title on someone uh that doesn't sound, it sounds like it's going to hit everything, but the job description doesn't hit on everything. So I'd.
Correct, and that was. Yeah, sorry, go ahead.
I, I, I'd be looking, because if they turn around and say that uh they, they do this uh according to their title, but the, the job description is some, something slightly different. Uh, we need to be careful with that.
Correct, and that's why, you know, again, that was a previous discussion that was had at the board chair meeting was requesting that list with titles. That's why when the electrical board met, the previous list was brought up by the electrical board chair on the previous meetings. And it was better worded, instead of asking for the titles for who was available for daily direct supervision of that apprentice. Because again, you very well might have a four person, but that four person might be assigned to a job. And again, a four person might be somebody that raises a flag at the board level, but if the foreman is assigned to a job and that job is going to have an apprentice there, um, as long as they're, they're aware of the fact that they're testing to that the licensees that are being brought before are available for daily direct supervision. So, um, you know, that's that. But yeah, we're, we're gonna, unfortunately, you're, you're, we're always gonna have people that um you know, try to circumvent, but at the end of the day, if they come before the board after being granted ratio relief, the board could always remove the ratio relief and divert them back to the hiring ratio as it's specified within statute. So that's one one piece that we have, if for some reason we have a violation on the hiring ratio relief process. Uh, Kevin.
So, John, um, twenty years ago, when Governor Rel appointed me to the board, we used to see everything. And um, I'm just, I'm just wondering if we would see every ratio relief application at, would this board see them?
The way that the law was written, the asks of under eight are going through the department. So if you have a request of eight or less and you're attesting to such, um, those go through the department. And again, as long as you answer the questions appropriately, uh, because again, we're not looking for names and everything else. That's, the ask is small enough, right? That if we're, they're putting the uh application in, it's being acknowledged, if they're attesting to the fact that they haven't had any violations, it's approved and it goes back to DOL, where the reps at DOL are going to be the responsible persons for making sure that they have the right number of licensees for daily direct supervision. And again, if for some reason that company under eight had a violation, whether DCP, DOL, and or both, that would not be a pass go, that will come before the board. Uh, so that the board could review such. Same token, if there was an issue with the sponsor company after ratio relief has been granted, again, they would come before the board to answer before the board why they were violating after being granted relief.
Can we still get a copy of the rubber stamped ones?
Uh, yeah, it, it, it will be reportable. Um, I could tell you, as of now, we've to date, be mindful that the law went into place October first, so we're still relatively new. We only had four applications. And all four applications have been for an electrical relief. Okay, so none for the fire board. But yes, if uh, I would just ask, you know, that the board just request, you know, if there has been any, and we could give an update on that, because it, yes, will be reportable.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Well, I, it seems I was discussing this for recommendations to, so we, we become uniform. I would say I like, I like that list, you know, list of licensed employees with job titles to assure jo- uh, job supervision. But I, the other thing I'd like to throw onto there is that should be a notarized letter, make it a true statement. Uh, the violations being, you know, with either DOL, DCP reported to the board, I like that, and I think everybody's in agreement. We talked about in the past, the eighty-five percent. I think if we get the letter from number, you know, the first recommendation, we don't need that eighty-five percent because we could, we can weed them out through that, so.
And that, that's why the electrical board didn't move forward with a guarantee percentage. Um, because again, if, if a company has the bulk of the individuals are in, in the office and they're attesting to the fact that they're not available for daily direct supervision, we shouldn't be granting it up to the eighty-five percent. Ha- having that, so the board could look at it holistically and not have to guarantee up to X amount. That's why that was not put in the recommendations from the electrical board's policy. But again, further discussion to be had on that. It could be utilized as a guidance, you know, up to eighty-five percent. Uh, and, and just for clarity, for the board members that are here, the reason why eighty-five percent came up at the board chair's meeting, number one, from my understanding, because I was not on the apprenticeship council, uh, that was kind of utilized as guidance previously. But the reason why eighty-five percent was guidance was at a hundred percent of one-to-one uh supervision, you're going to have an individual that's going to be on vacation, out on comp, uh, unavailable for whatever the day, et cetera. So to avoid that licensee from being out for whatever the reason, and having an apprentice that might end up on a job site working, you know, outside a ratio, that's where the eighty-five percent rule came, came up for those asks over ten. But some companies may have, again, just cause, and there's no limit to how many applications. So again, if they were come before the board and the board deemed, you know, X amount at this time, and they want to come back before the board because the demand was there, they could do such and make an additional request. So that's, that's the one piece that they do have when the board's taking this into consideration. Um, you know, they could come back before and additionally ask never to exceed the number of licensees to the number of apprentices they're anticipating in or have on staff.
Yeah, like I say, I, I, you know, I think we're all in agreement, those, those two things that I mentioned, the uh, the list, notarized list and the uh report of violations. Everybody in agreement with that?
Mm-hmm.
Anybody isn't?
Yes.
Okay. I don't know, I think we pretty much, you know, anything else you, you could think to add to that ratio relief that, you know, that we should uh be looking at, John?
Um, not, not at this moment. I, I, we, just for clarity as well, the, the electrical board minutes obviously will be uh will be discussed at, at future, or notes, excuse me, will be discussed at future board chair meetings. But it, it was essentially a little over three hours of discussion and uh you know, there was, there was a lot of, a lot of back and forth. And again, I think that at the end of the day, we walked away with a lot of clarity as to if e- each application, as Dave had specified today, is going to be viewed on a case-by-case basis. We're never going to have two that are the same. So just, you know, when the board establishes a policy, obviously, we have to adhere to such policy for one year until the board can make that recommendation for change. Uh, that's what was written as a law. Uh, but again, moving, moving forward with these items, I think will give the board a clear uh picture of who the sponsor company is and what the reason for the request.
Why, are you, you did mention the phone conversation that you had one, one company that, I forget what you, the number you said, they had forty uh forty employees and their, their request, their ask was for the same amount or something to that effect, John?
Yeah, and, and, and again, in, in their defense, there is no policy in play right now. So the way, if you didn't read the law, you, you would read it if you kind of heard it and just assume it was one-to-one. If you scroll down to section two, that's where it says for ask over ten. Uh, you know, before, you know, by February first of twenty twenty-six or before, excuse me, that the board would have a policy. So there's no policy. So if you're just going on and reading, it, it appears that it's a one-to-one ask. So that was their ask. Yes.
I mean, it's, it's, it's a, you know, like a, I don't see, I don't foresee, I should say, uh a sprinkler contractor, you know, because you know, dude, well, again, the big, the, the big fish have brought up a lot of little ones. I mean, there's a lot of them out there. So there are big companies. Uh, there's still some small sprinkler outfits out there. Um, but I don't see it going to the, the root, the electrical. I mean, you, you, you go on a job, you see two, maybe four sprinkler fitters. You go on a, you know, the same job, there could be thirty, forty electricians on the job, you know, it's, you know, uh does, does the work demand that size of the crew or is that the way they work? I, you know, not trying to.
And, and again, that, they have to, part of the application, they're testing to such, is they have to, they have to present before the board an undue hardship. So then, you know, the company being awarded a contract and needing additional manpower is not good cause for requesting additional apprentices. So again, that's why every application needs to be reviewed on a case-by-case basis. What's the reasoning for such? Um, and again, if they could establish that, you know, they have X amount of licensees and those licensees are available for direct daily supervision of those apprentices, and they have the demand in place um to substantiate the fact that this is not to some, you know, surpass for one project, that this is going to be utilized to maintain these apprentices. Also written in the law, just for clarity, was the fact that if they're granted relief and for some reason that apprentice was laid off before they could seek additional, they have to offer the job to that apprentice that was laid off. Um, so again, to avoid the situation of people being essentially hired and let go just to uh meet job site record uh manpower needs.
Did they use that word hardship, John?
Undue hardship is within there, correct?
It, it is, okay. I, because like I say, I, 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 I mean, we used to use the hardship for uh, you know, to waive the two years, which we were told that you can't do anymore. But I mean, uh, I, I just, you know.
No, we have, we do have equivalent experience, though. We have a quote. It just says, that one there is just a spin-on wording, because equivalent experiences in statute.
Yeah, uh, but like I say, it's, it does, I, again, that's another thing I like. It's, it's hardship, not manpower needs. So, yeah, I'd like to see that, you know. So I think the board's in agreement with that also. So. Uh, anything further on ratio relief? No. All right, moving along, correspondence. Rochelle, I don't think we have any correspondence other than the, the letter I received from the, the governor for uh Peter Wilsley's uh appointment to the board.
Yeah, I didn't receive anything else.
That was the only one. Comments? Nobody's present today. Any comments? Peter, do you have any uh comments on your first day here? I gotta.
As, as the saying, as the saying goes, it's like a drinker from the fire, the large diameter hose, taking it all in.
Well, you, you uh, you normally, I mean, meetings run forty, forty-five minutes. You, you, you uh, you joined us at one of our longer ones, uh. Yeah, so.
I, I, I understand where, where Mr. O'Sullivan was coming from, but it's just one of those, you have to follow the rules.
Oh, I, I sympathize with him. I, I, I wish, I wish there was something that could be done for him, but uh, we, we can't, we can't break the rules. We can't say, yeah, okay, well, you, you seem like a nice guy, you're a small contractor, because in the end, it could come back to haunt us. I mean, we could be, you know, something like Kevin brought up about the, the insurance or whatever, you know, to paying out a claim, you know, somebody says, well, how did you get a license? Well, well, I, I pled my case to the, to the board, and they were all nice guys and they, they felt sorry for me, and they, they gave me a license. It's uh, you know.
Rules are rules.
And for transparency on that, that's why he was denied at the application review working group by the chairperson. You have to have direct equivalency in order to move on. If not, the board as subject matter experts can uh review and issue credit where deficiencies are based upon out-of-state equivalent credentials, et cetera. So just, just.
John, John, do you rec, John, do you recommend that we write up a substantiation to that motion and a vote on Mr. O'Sullivan, just to have it on record?
Um.
Say that again, Kevin?
We, we do this at NFPA. When we, when we make a motion and a vote on it, we usually have a substantiation attached to it. So you can look at historical reference and see why we did what we did.
I would, I would divert back to Rochelle. I don't know if Rochelle was able to capture such in the uh, in the minutes.
Okay.
Did, did you get that Rochelle?
Because if he does take it to legal, they're going to look back at us and say, what was the substantiation to your motion and vote?
Yeah. Did, did you get that Rochelle?
I noted the original denial, but I could go back through the, because this is all recorded too, so I could go through the transcript and um summarize the conversation again.
Great, thank you.
I can tell you from being in attendance, I think it was pretty clear that it was identified, the discrepancies in his mass license versus what he was seeking for approval on the Connecticut F four. So I believe, but if, if you want to make a motion, Kevin, just to clearly identify if the board want to second it, it wouldn't be a bad thing to have in the minutes.
Kevin, just, I just looked back at my notes from the meeting on the twenty-fifth. And when John and I agreed to deny it was, and I have it in quotation marks, it was due to lack of apprentice, apprenticeship completion in the Massachusetts license, not equivalent to Connecticut. That, that was.
That's pretty, pretty clear. Okay.
So I mean, that's, that, that, if, if Rochelle looks back, I mean, the recording or she, you know, it should, it should, you know.
But that's the application review working group.
Yeah.
Oh, I mean, okay, so.
But, but the whole, then, I think what Kevin is saying, it would hold true for today's, because.
Yeah, no, two, two different views. So.
To John's point, I'll, I'll make a motion to include a summary of the substantiation to the vote and the, the motion and the vote.
Then you want to, that word, you want to use that wording or?
Yeah, I think so. I don't see.
The lack of apprentice, you, you know, lack of apprentice completion.
Oh, yeah.
And, and Massachusetts license not being equivalent to the state of Connecticut's license.
Correct, but I, I need a second on the motion to do that.
Well, hold, hold on, Kevin. Can I just get, can I just get clarity before there's on that? It's on the job training, right? Where, did the, did the board agree that he had the related instruction based on the certification that he presented? Or is it going to be, I would just, I would just, I would just ask, you're going to go this way?
He's lacking.
Identify that it's related instruction and on the job training in the full, just for clarity.
Both.
Well, wouldn't the lack of apprentice completion cover, I mean, you know, he, he didn't complete the apprenticeship as, as set forth in the guidelines.
But he's coming with equivalent out-of-state licensure. And so again, if he, if he, he was all, he was coming in as an applicant with equivalent out-of-state licensure. So he, he would have had the opportunity. It, it wasn't, but that's how, that's how he was applying. So some states, some other jurisdictions do have apprenticeship for this particular license type, where apprenticeship completion would have deemed that he would have had a meet a hundred and forty-four hours minimally to complete that uh apprenticeship. So the apprenticeship completion is universal. He didn't complete a Connecticut apprenticeship, nor did he complete an out-of-state apprenticeship to bring forth for the review. Additionally, he was coming in equivalent out-of-state license, which again, at the application review working group was deemed not complete because it didn't have the full competencies as a Connecticut F four. But again, for Kevin's motion, I would just ask that it, it's just clear that its related instruction is insufficient along with meeting.
OJ Ts.
Yes, equivalency. Thank you.
So I'm writing that down under comments, so just if Rochelle, you keep it. So we have it the same. The Kevin made a motion that I'll entertain a second that we have some wording there.
Lane seconded.
Yeah, for the denial. And the wording there that, you know, that we used. Any discussion, further discussion? All in favor, signify by say and I?
I.
I.
Any opposed? All right, so it's passed. Okay, nothing further? I thank everybody and uh again, welcome aboard, Peter. It's uh, nice to meet you uh and uh hope to see you at future meetings.
That, I'll be there for the December meeting.
Okay.
Nice to meet you, Peter.
And nice to meet you, Peter. Everybody remembers that, that meeting is in person, so.
Yep.
Yeah, uh, that's another thing, uh, John or Rochelle, we'll have to get Peter's paperwork. Uh, is that in the process? So he can.
Already taken care of.
Uh, you are the best, Rochelle.
Yeah.
Thanks, Rochelle.
I, I, I'm sure, I'm sure everybody, myself included, we're going to pull up to that gate and uh the passes aren't going to work, because uh.
I can't control that. I try my best.
Been over thirty days, so uh, you know. It's been over thirty days, so uh, you know. I don't know why.
Thanks, thanks for your input, John.
No problem, alright.
Thank you, everybody, so I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Thanks, Dave.
Motion for adjournment?
So, motion.
Second?
Second.
Second, all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? Alright, meeting's adjourned, ten thirty-two.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, everybody.
Have a good day.
Kevin.
Bye now.